I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of November 21st, 2016, to order the normal silent meditation session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to sit as a licensing board? All those in favor? A liquor licensing rule number one, opening hearing on renewal of the following liquor license continued from November 7th, 2016. Class DV, Cheryl Grill, Daniel Canuck, President, 14 Spring Street, Oak Valley. Mr. Canuck's president? All these pages have noticed it posted. Okay, notice has been posted. Alright. Anybody want to ask questions? Mr. Canuck, come on, come to the podium, please.
I was just wondering, how is Cheryl coming and what are your plans for this year?
This year is almost over. We've been engineering and working with Terry Rhodes to put a new septic system on the property. Finding out that the system was on George's property, on the adjacent property to the back. And we're looking into getting water from the Richmond town to see if we can get their water supply so it eases the septic system issue. So we'll be working on that. And a few of our events were missing in the last meeting.
Do you have any idea when it's going to open?
I'm certainly hoping for the spring. Terry says that it's going to be a little bit of process because we're working with the water. If we can get the town water, it'll be a little bit easier. But we're working, if not, we have to go through all the hoops that the state requires, maybe water issues that are there.
And then the septic goes to the water, the septic and the well systems upstate?
Right, I have a public well, a private well, I should say, and then we're trying to look more into the public because of cleanliness, that, you know, there's no bacteria issues and stuff like that.
So that would mean extending the water line on Spring Street?
Well, we're trying to work with the neighbors next door. I know the car, William, I forgot the next one, his name. He has water already on his property from working with less than, so there's water already coming across. We're going to see if we can just bring it to the adjacent building and using some, a tank system up in the attic to secure our water and give us enough for the consumption and also for sprinkler system.
I could suggest to you that you, on your own, if you're up to it, let Richmond know. The way it works is for you to do this is, and I know you're right near the water, where it is.
Right.
It's up to Richmond. We have an agreement, a contract with Richmond, and we can't extend it without their permission, even if it's easy. So, oh, good. So you might want to let the Richmond Town Council know, and I would suggest you let the New Council know.
Okay.
Because recently they denied one resident from tying in, which was just not that far away, just like you, and they just said, why don't you just wait until you have a lot of users? Well, there isn't any money to extend the water line lately. So minor little tweaks like that are very possible, but it's only if the Richmond Council will allow it. So you might want to give one of them or two of them a call, let them know what's going on, even if you just do it by phone.
Not at all, better than a person.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you had made a comment that if you get the water system, it will ease the septic system. How do you?
Well, not that it'll ease the septic system.
You're just looking at the distance between the well and the septic, so you have more area to put in a leach field.
Right, I could go to the other side of the property and go where it's cleaner and try not to, because there's a system to my backside. The system that would be put in would be a Vantex system, it would be a Bonner San Chover.
Okay, there was just, when you made the comment of ease the septic, I'm thinking, well, water is the same amount, no matter if it's from a private well or...
Right, but it was...
You're looking distances between the wells.
Right, you're trying to keep, contain that area.
So you're not sure when or if you will open in 2017?
I'm certainly hoping that I can finally use this license out of the bank.
And then, my understanding, the town council's current prior?
Well, they will be, yes, tomorrow.
They are at the moment, okay. Do you know the distance right now between your well and septic?
It's over 100 feet.
It is over 100?
Yes.
But that's because part of it's on someone else's property?
Yes.
Yeah. How much is on someone else? Like, the leach field or?
The leach field.
The leach, most of it, most of the leach field?
The septic tank is on my property and it appears, and I couldn't go through, you know, I had to go a little bit onto that property to find the pipe went that way. We found some literature that shows it being on George's property, and it must have been installed sometime...
Long ago.
Long, longer than that.
Is Georgia on that garage there, the former garage?
No, she doesn't.
Okay. It's not on that, but he's...
No.
It's behind the bakery.
Yeah.
If you're looking at the bakery, it's like two buildings back.
Yeah, there's a bakery in this garage and...
Right.
Okay, guys, anything else? Anyone out there in the public who should be heard on this?
Then I'll make a motion to grant renewal to the license subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town councils' current priors. Second?
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
And we need one more motion, I guess.
Motion to increase limit on class D licenses by one license to include six class D licenses.
Second? Motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move that we adjourn the licensing board if we can be able to tell September.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, consent to get approved town council meeting minutes of October 17th, 2016, accept the following monthly financial activity report to town clerk, approve of abatements to duplicate building and camper relocation submitted by the tax assessor.
Have a couple of minor corrections to the minutes of October 17th.
Make a motion to accept the financial activity report from the town clerk, approve the abatements to reduce the building and cancel relocation submitted by the tax assessor.
Second?
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
What page?
Page two, left line down, right up, you know, the line that says, it should say, and I'll be said, the first one before him to speak. Page three now.
Page two.
And I'll be left one down.
Is the news reporter in here?
I don't know. On page three, halfway down to the line that says Public Desert, I believe that it says received two, it should be T W O, halfway down right there, sorry, it says Public Desert, semicolon, received, it says T O, it should be T W O, I believe, right, two...
Oh, there in the second page. Two to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, two.
The number two.
Yeah, two, yeah. Alright, page five, one more thing, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the ninth line down where it starts with the way, it says, this was when, was when, yeah, just get rid of the...
Page five. That sentence down.
Get rid of the was, 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 was. Ah, that's good, otherwise.
Yes, but... Okay. Anything else?
One more.
Move that we accept the October 17th minutes.
Second? Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. First public forum, anything on the agenda anybody wishes to comment on? Feel free to...
Scott Hill, here's 28 what act was. You have a question, was the state ever formally notified in writing of the vote of the town council in regard to their opposition and train of, was that ever formally committed, sent to State Rhode Island that the town council opposed that? I don't believe a letter was ever sent, correct me if I'm wrong.
Not yet, Scott. We want to, I trumped the bill, we're going to wait until everything's certified, so it should be this week.
Okay, because, I mean...
It'll be sent by the new council.
Yeah. But also, in addition, I do note that the town council as a body, months ago, did adopt a unanimous stand against it, which seemed to me at that time, when that vote was passed by the town council, that would have been passed on to the state authorities, in addition to the recent vote that took place at the regular election. I just wanted to...
Not sure about the prior ones, but this one, you know, with the resolution that passed, or basically denied two to one, that will be sent, I guess, once everything's certified, this week, and then we'll, once the new council's installed, which we're going to work on, what date that's going to be, and then, and then we'll send it out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that, Charlie. I don't mind doing that.
Treason of representative...
Under new business first item, discuss, consider, and vote to authorize National Grid to open the roadway to provide natural gas service to residents located at 19 Maxine Street. Paul Spazian is here from Grid, if anybody has any questions, seems pretty straightforward. Do you have a question for me? Paul?
I always got questions for you.
Hopefully I get the right answers.
If you have to cut the roadway, because you stayed, you didn't know where that transition section's going to be, and you paved it, you'd be willing to come back and repave it after it sinks?
I think we had a discussion earlier.
I just talked too early about this.
Okay, so what we usually do is that when we, we will fill that in with a hot patch if asphalt is available, otherwise it will be done with a cold patch. But at any time over the next 90 days that you notice something, please get a hold of me, I'll have someone who are there, you put it down, but we have to wait 90 days to do permanent pavement.
I'm thinking more towards next spring or summer, after we go through the winter with the frost each and stuff like that.
Right, but in the interim, if there's an issue with...
Oh, in the interim, yeah, okay.
And then we'll come back and we'll, we'll patch it again.
Okay.
Alright, because plows and everything else will be going over it, and we looked out. But we don't anticipate going in, but you never know.
I already know.
I believe Paul told me, it's not actually going to be, try for us, the street is going to be along the side of the street, is that right?
Yeah, it is in the side of the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was looking through the map.
Yeah, but it said also that they didn't know if they, where that company was exactly.
Right.
Now, how far up does that go for the gas? I'm not sure. I think it goes, at least, four or five more homes.
Really? I always thought it went down Laurel Street, because I know the gas still goes to Ashville, but I did not know if it went up Maxine Street or where.
It does.
Anything else for Paul? Okay, because Bill was kind of promoting down on the bottom, it's not...
I'll make a motion that the Hopkinton Town Council authorize National Grid to provide the network gas service for residents located at 19 Maxine Street.
Second?
Motion made second, can we further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, discuss, consider, and vote to authorize the release of the maintenance guarantee to present U.S. State's President Gary Johnson in the amount of $54,374. We saw our memos in our file here, I guess we're all into this, and seems pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to the Hopkinton Town Council authorize the release of the maintenance guarantee to present U.S. State's President Gary Johnson in the amount of $54,374.
Second?
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, under new business, discuss, consider, and vote on a resolution opposing the sitting of the Clear Energy Center in North River, Rhode Island. So the information was in our packets, I know some of the council folks have some questions and you folks are here, hopefully answer those, so maybe you can just give us a kind of an overview of what the project is and why you're so against it, I guess that might help us.
That sounds a good, good idea, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Ray McTrank, I'm a councilman-elect. President Pacheco asked me to come and represent him and the town council seating. I noticed your motto, not to be silent nor off guard. The borough town comps meetings for the past several months have taken place in the high school auditorium with hundreds in attendance every meeting. The reason that we're asking you to join with us, I think I could tell you from many meetings that we've been to, that our brothers in the trades are telling you and telling everyone that this is a nitty issue, not in our backyard. Well, that is true, we don't want it in our backyard, and we don't want it in your backyard, we don't want it in the state's backyard, we don't want it in the United States backyard, and we don't want it in the world's backyard. It's a giant gas power plant settled in the only forest canopy left in Rhode Island. It's, when you fly over Rhode Island, you see one dock area, and that is where this plant is going to go. Twenty, over 20 years ago, the Omni Cores of Engineers did a survey and said that this would be the absolute worst place to put a power plant that they could imagine. It's near one of the only real lakes that was dug by the Ice Age, Wallon Lake in Burrowville, and the aquifer that starts all the aquifers that comes down here. Ladies and gentlemen, we have had hearing after hearing after hearing, and right now the, the status of the power plant is that their application's been suspended because they haven't gotten water. At one point, they actually wanted to use the poison water in the MTVE well in Pasco. Now, that well is the site of the largest MTVE spill in the history of the United States. So we people in Pasco don't have to imagine what it would be like to be polluted by a giant like this, we already have, we've given it the office. We also have a power plant in town and a gas accelerator station, so we're kind of experienced with power plants. And the thing is, people have gotten together, done their research, done their homework, and the town council is against it. I've got a list of 30 other organizations in 10 other towns. There's also South Kingston, and Richmond have joined up since that list was created, and you'd be number 112 on towns joining up. We need the help because we're going, once, once they find water, and just to, just so that you know, the average water consumption, and you get a lot of numbers from these people, the average water consumption is going to be somewhere between 250 and 400,000 gallons a day. The maximum is going to be 1 million gallons per day. So it is, it is an ecological nightmare, and once the process is started, if it does get started then, if they do find a source of water, we will have one more EFSB hearing, and as you sometimes hear, if you have a plain car, if you lay it this way, it's not too thick, or if you hold it up this way, it is. And that's what we're trying to do, is get other towns involved with us, to show that it's not just a Burrowville issue, but it's Rhode Island issue, and we would appreciate your support. I brought along some borough constituents, if you'd like to talk to them, they, they will tell you a lot about, what we're telling you is that this plant isn't good for anyone. The Rhode Island Renewal Act throws that out the window. It really is data and technology that we're going to be forced to live with for 40 years, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Dave?
Could you, could anyone of you tell me, why, why did they choose Burrowville in the first place?
Access to high power, high tension, oh, you know, my insight, access to high tension power lines, gas lines, and for wild water.
What, I mean, there's those things in Massachusetts, there's those things in Connecticut.
Well, I can tell you that we didn't bring the diagram with us tonight, but we have a diagram that shows that that's exactly what's being done over the last 20 years, that in an area about 30 miles, seven power plants have been cited. It's that area of Northern Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts, where all of those connect together. And you don't have to go looking for an electric line, you don't have to go looking for a high-powered gas line, and water is plenty, so that's, that's why. And there's no, no, no concern for nature, no concern that this is in the middle of George Washington Park, Buck Hill Reservation, and dead center of the new Blackstone Valley Heritage Historic Power South.
I have a couple of those, if I could, perhaps someone can help me. You gave us this planet policy information that we were just reading at the beginning, and it is from Brookings Institute, which is very well-known.
And yes, I brought that in to share, please.
Please come to the microphone.
Okay.
The Brookings Institute is very well-respected on any number of levels.
Absolutely, and I found that article, and I thought it was poignant, and by the way, my name's Robin Northrup, I'm not from Burrowville, I'm from Cranston, and I came on board in July, and I realized it was not just a borough issue, it's a statewide issue, and it's, it's just not a good thing to happen. But anyway, I hope that you did read that article, and it makes me very proud to be a Rhode Islander, because we've made history, we're the first in the western hemisphere to have a deep water wind farm three miles off the coast of Block Island, and I say, let's give a hand for wind. But with that said, how could we diverge from that, and how could Rhode Island possibly entertain the idea of this 1,000-megawatt power plant that will be a monster polluter?
We're actually interested in that in Hopkinton, because we're also as rural as Burrowville is.
Yes.
Cranston may not be the borough, and Hopkinton are very similar, and we're having the same issues, because your aquifer, I need to talk to someone from Burrowville, your aquifer is above ground and underground, and ours, of course, is, we have a very huge underground one, as well as it pops up in places, and our concern is maybe sure that we can protect the water for our citizens, and it sounds like you're doing the same for yours. And I thought that was also brought up in this article from Brookings, so I think aquifer protection, you're certainly barking up the right tree here, because we have the same issues with the state. The job creation issue, it does seem to be a problem too, I think it was in this report as well, you know, getting people to build something is hundreds of people, but once you open, having 24 people on something that massive, I think, is not really helpful for your benefits, although I don't know what that does with your taxes, because I would assume they pay taxes, but I could be wrong, because some things in the state don't pay taxes. So I would be interested if the town council perhaps knows where your tax liabilities are. And also, if someone could explain, perhaps knows more about the fracking, the upstate fracking, I would be interested in that as well, because that certainly will come down.
Aquifer, you're absolutely right on the aquifer, when you share that. The taxes, it's, power plants generally sign an agreement in lieu of taxes.
With who?
We have a power plant in town...
With the town or with the state?
With the town.
So in lieu of taxes?
In lieu of taxes. It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
And is that every year?
The one that we have with Ocean State Power, which is our original power plant, is a 20-year, and the one with Invenergy, if they are to cite a power plant, would be 20 years as well.
Do you still have the other power plant open though?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you would get two, you're lucky.
Yeah, 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 we're lucky that way. And the, we were talking about it last night, we had a meeting, and we were talking about the, the gas generator, and that just makes a low humming noise, it sounds like a tornado, 24/7, 365 days a year. And so, we're on our third power type, like, power plant, we have that gas accelerator, now we're on our third power plant. But, but it is because we're at that hub of fracked gas, this is, this is a fracked gas plant, that also has, if it's cited, and the governor's fellow trusts the process, we are, they'll also be able to run 60 days a year on oil, which would be trucked in, and that's when they use the, that's when they use the million gallons of water, so...
Follow-up with a question, Paul, did you have a referendum on this with Burrowville?
No. What happened was, our rights were taken away, towns have, many towns have the right to vote on a tax treaty. We don't, our rights were taken away in the 80s, which paved the way for the first power plant. Our representative sponsored a bill that would restate those rights, so that we would, as a town, be able to vote on any tax treaty signed with Invenergy or Clear River LLC, or whatever they are this week. And that failed. We passed the House and failed spectacularly in the Senate. But, but it came out in the press that we were trying to get additional rights, and when in fact we were just trying to reinstitute rights that we had always had. Many communities still have the right to vote on a tax treaty, and I don't know if any in Rhode Island actually have a choice to vote on a referendum.
I'm just amazed that the town wasn't able to have a referendum saying, are you in favor or not in favor of this project? And I buy you.
And that's, that's explained by the fact that the energy facility cited what a process, that's supposed to be a great process, but, I mean, some of the things that have happened, and I could go on all night, but I mean, one night we had an EFSB hearing in the town of Burrowville, and Invenergy put a false ad in the local shoppers guy, we call it barter by ex-our buyer, like that. They put the wrong date, the wrong time, and the wrong place, saying people running all over town. I mean, the things that have gone on are unbelievable, but, but to answer your question directly, no, we don't have any rights as far as rejecting or approving the plan, it's just been shoo leather, we've been out there.
I would just say that would weigh heavily on any decision other towns would have, if they find the residents don't want it, you know, by all odds, majority, I think that you certainly could get support just, just for the sake of the referendum.
Well, I mean, you know, I could tell you politically, like you said, we have town council meetings now in the auditorium with hundreds of people, we've had EFSB meetings where we've had 600 people and many, many turned away, and in the most recent election, the three top voters were all anti, aren't anti-power plant people, so...
Yes, what's the current status right now, is it in port? I understand it's already gone through planning and zoning, so I just wondered, what's up, what's next?
Hi, my name's Lily Clark, I'm from Laurel Village. Currently in the process, it's suspended with the signing of the order. All the advisory opinions have been received on our end of the, to the signing board, however, Invenergy fell short on having a water supply, but that being said, they have a 90-day suspension, so they need to come up with a water source by January 12th. Once our town's advisory, and we had our advisory board and our planning boards, all pulled hearings with our experts and Invenergy experts, and we sat in on those hearings as well. The planning board and the zoning board both came back in opposition to, to the power plant being cited at that location. And the town council also came out in opposition, and they wrote a resolution in opposition to the power plant and sent it to all the cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island and in our neighboring communities of Connecticut and Massachusetts. So as residents of Burrowville, wholeheartedly are fighting for our lives and for the sake of all of Rhode Island, we really appreciate you taking the time to hear us on this important issue and consider to adopt a new resolution. I have one of our maps here, and this is where they want to put it, and we have George Washington Campground, we have Boy Scout Campground up there, we have Buck Hill Camp, Buck Hill Management Area, Wallon Lake, Zambrona Hospital, it's just really, it's pristine forest up there that should not be housed by this, this energy facility.
So what has the governor said?
The governor is...
Did you get any writing from her?
No, she came out to listen to the residents in Burrowville, and she assured us to trust the process. She said the signing board, which is of three people, they have sole power on deciding whether or not to cite this power plant.
That's a state board, right?
It is a state board, yes.
Who's on that board?
We have the Chair of DEM, the Chair of PUC, and the Chair of statewide planning.
Alright. Thank you.
Couple of questions. How much acres acreage is this facility to encompass?
Okay, they want to purchase 67 acres from Spectra. The footprint, when they add additional power lines and tie into the gas line, the footprint will be about 67 acres. But it will impact more hundreds of acres of forest, just because it's going to break up the continuous forest that runs along... up the continuous forest that runs along Rhode Island up into Maine. It's at a bottleneck area, and if they put that power plant there, it's going to really break off species from traveling. And the shortfall of this whole process, where my, I have, you know, I don't want it because of my quality of life, but I love animals and wildlife, and it would be horrific to the species of the region to just cut off their track of land to migrate north and south, as they're used to in for the breeding and all that. And there's not much representation in that area as to protect that forest for what it stands for.
Okay. How close would this end up to a residential housing?
The nearest house is, what, 600 feet away, if not. Yet the, my, I have a friend that, her driveway is going to be right across the street from the entrance.
We actually, we actually have one resident who lives on Buck Hill, which is the second highest point in Rhode Island, who, the 200-foot stacks are only going to be 40-foot stacks for her. She's above it, so she'll actually be looking down at it, and the stacks will be 40 feet above her house. So there are, there are a wide range of, it's not like you would think you'd put a thing in the center, because they haven't identified the actual property they're going to be on. They've identified the land that they want to buy, but they haven't, that's about 200 acres, so they haven't actually told us where the arrow will go. Some of the houses are a few hundred feet away, some of them are a mile and a half away, they're going to be, and some of them that are further away, but yet above the project. So it's, it's, you know, like here, very much like here, if you thought about a power plant coming into this town, God forbid, you would see all different types of relief that needed to be done, because it's not a flat area. You're not just a half a mile, or three-quarters of a mile, or 300 feet, or 700 feet. There's different elevations, different water levels, you know, and one of the things is, some of these really nice ponds, like Wakefield Pond, actually give you such a great view of the stacks, because you get to look across the pond at the stacks, and not looking for a bark. So there's a lot of that going on, and I think, to be honest, that that debate is probably the next major debate, as to who is actually affected and who isn't.
And one other question I have is, speaking of ponds, the amount of water that's going to be used, where is the discharge going to be? Is it going to a river? Is it going to a pond? Is it self-sufficient, or, and is it clean before it is discharged?
The application is very vague. And we do not have, our sewer commission was looking into what upgrades we would have to do.
So would actually go into your own sector?
Actually, that, we don't know that, because now they've been told to not even, yeah, this is his area.
I used to be on the sewer commission. Yeah, the original application called for them to use the water from the MBTE polluted well, which, any of you who've ever dug a well, if you get, you know, 60 gallons per minute, you're a real happy person. Well, this well pumps out 410 gallons per minute. And that's what got it in trouble in the first place. It's such a powerful well, that, it's a series of two wells, actually, but it's such a powerful well, that it drews the MBTE gas from the gas station that had the leaks, through the bedrock and into the well, polluted. And the plan at that time was loosely to take that water and put it back into the sewer system, through a dedicated pipe, and then back into the town sewer system, and then eventually back to the Blackstone River. You know, that didn't make it, because, I don't know how you guys work down here, you work with fire departments and water, private little, yeah. We have the Pasco Utility District, which is a small electric company, small municipal electric company, and they're also a water supplier. And they eventually, their manager at one point did sign an agreement to provide water, but the Pasco commissioners rose up and decided not to. And one of the reasons they decided not to was because Invenergy was to become their main customer. Invenergy was to get their 400 gallons per minute, or their 750,000 gallons a day, before we were to get out with it. And Pasco, just so they know, Pasco doesn't provide water because of the MBTE crisis. Pasco buys water from nearby Harrisville for us, to the people of Pasco. So we're already on our last leg, and we were going to sell water to a power plant. Cool had prevailed, Harrisville was also offered an opportunity to go out and find the water for Invenergy, and they turned that down as well. So that's where they stand right now, they have plenty of electric lines and plenty of fracked gas, but no water. And one of the things that we're finding now is that the people that are being affected most by fracked gas down in Pennsylvania are also on our side. They don't want this power plant to come in to be able to have a bigger call for fracked gas, which is hurting them. And one of the things that we've been asked in a few different places, do we really need it? And the answer to that question is no. They went out to an electric auction, they put their electricity out of 1,000 megawatts, and they sold less than 50% of it. So it's not needed, it's not wanted, and we would appreciate your support.
Hi, everyone, thank you. My name's Mike Monroe, I come to you as a resident of Boroughville, also a member of the Boroughville Land Trust. I just felt it was important to thank you, so I'm just the one that was emailing you. So thank you for putting out the email. One thing that I just wanted to add to everything that everyone's already said, seems like every election, there's always a question on the ballot to secure funds, to purchase and preserve open space, such as question six this year. So when we talk about the state property that's up there, as recent as 2012, DM purchased the abutting land to where they want to put this, and they did a big article, which it quite said that this is one of the best purchases that they made, that this is one area that they need to focus and preserve. That's all our money. That's our taxes that's going to fund and preserve, and it's the same forest that you all enjoy here. So today, I just wanted to kind of mention that, and again, ask for your support, because it really does impact this whole entire forest that we're lucky enough to live in every day.
Yeah, we certainly would agree with you on that, because our, we have major forests all the way across Hopkinton's western side, and our entire town as well. We have no water line, we have only a very tiny one near Richmond, so everything we do is well. So water is crucial. We certainly have Autobahn here, Nature Conservancy, our own land trust, and this is all very crucial to all of us, I think, on the western state, because we are the path, you know, north to south. So I understand your concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to push it down. Usually I'm, my name is Patricia France, and I live at 57 Wotten Foster Road here in Hopkinton. And I was asked by the representatives of this group to speak as a citizen of the town, since I don't think any other town citizen was able to come down. I've been attending, I attended about three or four of the Public Utility Commission meetings, the energy facility citing board meetings at the PUC headquarters, and I've been up to two or three of the meetings in Boroughville. And I agreed to come, not because I really have a lot more factual, scientific information to offer, but I, to remind, to remind especially Barbara, I remember during the campaign in 2006, when I ran for town council, at one of the open meetings to introduce the candidates at the, I believe it was at the Hope Valley Elementary School. We were asked, one of the questions that we were asked was, of all the towns in Rhode Island, which one do you think sets a good model for Hopkinton and its future? And I named Boroughville. As a town that, a town that I felt has heroic in maintaining its rural character. And I encourage these people all the time by saying, it's a town in an area, probably you know, Foster, Gloucester, and Boroughville, where people have wanted to build a superhighway connecting Providence and Hartford for, I don't know how long, it must be 60, 70, 80 years. And every time somebody brings it up, people of Boroughville say, we do not want a superhighway going through. It's pristine countryside, and they have fought, and fought, and fought, and they've won. So if we lose this town, it's going to be a terrible disappointment, because they have a really heroic history of resisting development that they don't want in the town. It also reminded me, when I was listening to their problems over the last few months, it reminded me a little bit of the enormous amount of energy and resistance that we made in Hopkinton, to simply the localization of a new electric substation down in Ashway. You know, I mean, there are, I don't know, 10 or 15 houses along a river road, and beautiful location, but behind the National Bureau had a tiny space, and they wanted, you all remember it. Just remember the upset that that caused. It's a tiny little circular field behind a lot of houses. And this is 67 acres of land, and that's, when someone says, how near is the nearest you, that's to the plant, Tom. But to the door, the gateway into the property, which all these water trucks will have to follow.
And that's what I was looking for, is to get to the property.
There's a house across the street from that. There was someone's home on this quiet country road, is going to be invaded by these trucks bringing in the oil, and taking out the waste, or bringing in the water. So I just wanted, as a citizen of Hopkinton, to bring to your attention that a fellow rural town, which we feel, I think, a close sympathy, is asking for our support in this, whether that would be included in the package. I was at the meeting where this suspension was dealt with by the EFSB, and in a way, it was a gift. Invenergy had failed to meet all of the requirements at the date at which the process should have closed. And the signing board suddenly decides, let's offer the suspension. Well, my first reaction was, they're going to suspend the application when it gets over. No, they graciously granted them three more months to get their act together. So there's no assurance that they won't do that again if they don't have the water supply. But think about what this town, what this company is now able to do. It's able to vote on Saka, which I believe you all know, is a very poor community, probably having enormous tax problems. If you had to name the next community in Rhode Island to be named one of those administrators, instead of the local democracy working, they appointed an administrator who tells you what you can and can't do, you would probably think it would be Saka. So in goes Invenergy, saying, you know, we've got millions and billions and millions, and you want your water to process the plant in Boroughville, you know? It's just, it's just nasty, and so I hope you will think about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gary Patterson, my friends call me Squeaky. My family has lived on Wallon Lake Road, which is where they want to build the power plant, for 220 years. And this multinational corporation called Invenergy wants to turn rural Boroughville into an industrial complex. They intend to build the largest gas and oil power plant in New England, in the midst of five state parks. Washington Park, Polaski Park, the Buck Hill Management Area, the Federal State Forest, and Quoddy Park. Opposition to this proposed plan has united people from all walks of life and all political persuasions. The state is trying to shove this project down our throats, in spite of the fact that the vast majority of citizens, including our state senator Fogarty and representative Kewell, are strongly opposed to it. The Boroughville Town Council has signed a revol, a resolution against the power plant, so has Gloucester, Loff Smithfield, Lincoln, and more. And we're, we're asking you to do the same.
Thank you.
I approve that we adopt the resolution opposing the signing of the Clear River Energy Center in Boroughville, Rhode Island, or any location in Rhode Island.
Any further discussion, questions? And I'm sorry that this is going through your town, I hope it's not, and we wholeheartedly support you. We're a very similar town in terms of ruralness and the same issues.
Thank you very much. If you'd mind taking a copy to the Energy Signing Board and the governor?
You can take it this evening, and then I'll, I'll be at Congress.
Thank you very much.
You didn't vote yet.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much. We will send a letter off, or an email off, Brian, our representative and Senator Morgan, I've asked him to also support this, send a letter off. Good night, folks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the meeting, let's discuss considering going on scheduling, on scheduling a separate meeting, obviously, on the 28th, square officials, and select council president. So I have to go to Philadelphia, I may have a little bit of a, that one, so I'm hoping you guys can bring her down.
No, we can, I think we can agree that it's November 28th, but if that's an issue, let Lisa and both aside on another day. I mean, Lisa, you're obviously, you're dealing with the board relationships.
I know, I believe that will be fine. We received an email this afternoon that pretty much explained that Lloyd Camus is likely not having a meeting until Monday. So that should be caught in the moment.
Okay. Seven will be fine. Thank you very much. I never go away, sorry for the inconvenience.
Especially with this whole purpose.
Yeah, then the table will be next, regular schedule. Okay. The second public forum. Anyone else who's ready? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? I, thank you.